Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mr. Sestich? We have eight members present this evening.
Thank you. Tonight, it is the board's pleasure to donate a book to the Bethel Park High School Library in memory of Nick Lenoski, the father of Bethel Park Director of Cyber and Alternative Learning, Brian Lenoski, who passed away in September. Brian, it's easy to see why you became an educator, as your father was an educator before you. Even when he retired as the shop teacher for the North Hills School District, he kept on teaching, as he followed his love for dance by teaching ethnic dances at Community College of Allegheny County and producing dance shows for the college throughout the years. It is also our understanding that your father loved to travel, especially by car. Legend has that he was known to easily drive 14 hours a day, which helped him to visit every state in the Union. And for those of you who were disco fans back in the 80s, you may very well have seen Mr. Lenoski's appearance on the syndicated television show Dance Fever. It sounds like your father lived a full life, Brian, and because of that, the Bethel Park Board of School Directors is pleased to be able to donate "A Walk in the Woods: Rediscovering America on the Appalachian Trail" by Bill Bryson to the Bethel Park High School Library in his memory. Brian, will you come forward to accept this in his memory?
Thank you, the board, very considerately. I appreciate it. Hopefully, our students will enjoy this book. My first teaching job was at Boiling Springs, which is right along the Appalachian Trail. In fact, our students at Boiling Springs maintain the trail. It's one of the stops, so this book was, I could relate to, because I've hiked it a few times. Not the entire trail, but maybe someday. Thank you.
Tonight, it is also our privilege to take some time to celebrate the success of one of our longstanding high school club sponsors. Way back in 1984, when Alice Urson was substitute teaching at Bethel Park High School, a group of students told her they wanted to form a forensic team, but they needed a coach. Mrs. Urson agreed to do it for one year. And 29 years later, she is still serving as the coach for our successful forensics team, which ably represents Bethel Park High School in local, state, and national speech and debate events, sponsored by the National Forensic League, or the NFL, as it is fondly referred to. Not only have Mrs. Urson's students won numerous local and state competitions, but they have also earned numerous degrees in the NFL, and their coach is no stranger to earning NFL degrees as well. Recently, Mrs. Urson received a letter from the National Forensic League indicating that she earned a fifth Diamond Degree of Membership, which signifies that under her instruction, her students have earned more than 130,000 credit points through speech and debate presentations, competitions, and service. Her name is now among a select list of coaches who have earned this distinction, and she will receive a plaque from the NFL at the national tournament in 2014 for recognition of this achievement. Mrs. Urson has run a successful program for Bethel Park over the years, and through her tutelage, her students have honed their public speaking, speech and debate, and performance skills, providing them with the necessary tools to communicate successfully and think critically in whatever career paths they choose. We have invited Mrs. Urson to be with us this evening to accept a certificate of appreciation from the Bethel Park Board of School Directors in recognition of her 29-year commitment to the students of Bethel Park High School and for this remarkable and well-deserved honor that she has received from the NFL. I would ask the audience to join me in this time in congratulating Alice Urson.
You never ask a speech teacher to come to a board meeting. I really appreciate the board and thank you for this recognition. However, your honor, really belongs to my kids, and those are the kids that I have had the privilege of coaching since 1984. Currently, there are 41 members on my team, and some of them are here tonight, and I want you to see how nicely they clean up. And how well, this is how they look when they go out at 6 o'clock on a Saturday morning. Stand up, guys. Through their scholarship and through their team competition, as was mentioned, they are members of the National Forensic League, which most people do not understand is not a club. It is a national honor society. And its mission statement is training youth for leadership. And last year, three of our team members, our seniors, were recognized by the NFL as Academic All-Americans, which meant they had a 3.7 GPA on a 4.0 scale, over 2,000 points or better on their SATs. They had achieved the degree of superior distinction and had served their community, and we are very proud of them. As a team, the team members average 10 hours per week in preparation. That's researching, writing, practicing, engaging in both critical and creative thinking. They began this process the first week that school began. They will continue this until the season ends, the local competitive season ends, the second week of April. They get on the school bus at 6 o'clock in the morning. They come home, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock at night. There is no ban to welcome them, but they come off with trophies, both individual and as a team. They have been recognized, this team, as being exemplary, both locally and nationally. Many of these students have competed at the state and national level, a level that can only be achieved through local competition. I run this co-curricular, I am going to stress that, co-curricular, activity as if it were a class, which it is in many of our local school districts. It is part of the college and high school program. The NFL to which they belong is a former forerunner in recognizing and formulating common core, and it is an organization recognized not only by the Association of Secondary School Principals, but is governed by the National Federation of State and High School Associations, that same association which governs our high school sports. So anyway, I am extremely proud of my kids, and I hope that you can be proud of them too. Thank you.
Officer Modrak and Zinsmeister, you're up.
Alice just commented that that's so nice that our new plan of action is named after her, Alice. I'm Jim Modrak. I'm the school police officer here for the school district. This is Officer Scott Zinsmeister from the Bethel Park Police School District, Bethel Park Police Department. He's our school resource officer. This past summer, right before school started, we attended a schooling up in Ohio in regards to emergency response to an active shooter. Unfortunately, in our society, more and more taking place, and most recently, there was one in Nevada yesterday. Our traditional program we have right now for our students and our staff is that if we had an active shooter in our building, we go to a lockdown mode. Lockdown is basically is get the kids, the staff, in the room, try to secure the room to the best of our ability, and wait for the police to arrive. In recent light of all these shootings that have been taking place over the last 20 years, all these events are over within five, six, seven minutes, and police response time is not within that timeframe. So recognizing that situation, that's the reality of what's been going on, or how do we prepare our community, our school district, the best we possibly can? So Scott and I attended this program in Ohio, and the program is named ALICE. And the acronym is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. The gist of this program is to minimize any potential victims that may come across an active shooter. There's different components to this program. Some of them can go step by step. Some of them, if you can take action at that time, minimize your liability as a victim, you act at that point in time. We're going to go a quick slide presentation. Scott and I will have a couple comments as we go through, and try to impress upon everybody that our traditional manner of lockdown, as we practice right now, we believe that we severely have to change up as quickly as possible to equip our community with the most alternatives to make everybody as safe as possible can. ALICE is standing for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. Alert, in the acronym, these are non-insustancial order. Alert is, are all authorized to announce to, within that school community, that there is a serious situation going on here right now. There is an active shooter. And in our school, we have upgraded our communications within our buildings to make it more accessible to staff in the classroom, administrators within our own equipment that we have, and with our secretaries at their desk, that we can get that message out to our school buildings as quickly and accurately as possible as we can. And that is the key, is getting that information out there so everyone can do, make the best decision they can at that time. L for lockdown, and if you must, at that time, barricade yourself in that classroom. And there's different techniques we go over, how to barricade yourself. We were doing some work on it at Logan's School. You want to explain that?
Yeah, we went to one of the schools that's no longer being used, and we came up with a way, an improvised way of securing a door that might not be good for a long-term securing of the door, but to buy time, it worked very well. We actually had to break the door before the method that we used failed. So it's just another way of buying time, which is the most important thing to do in these situations.
The next one is inform. Again, along with alert is inform. It's communication. Upgrading our communication, use simple, plain language, identify the problem, speak where it's at, recognize it, and then, of course, take the next best course of action. Counter. Counter is interrupt the skill set needed to shoot accurately. What this would be is this is a last resort. And again, let me go evacuate, get away from the danger if possible. That is the first choice. If we can evacuate from that area, safe, orderly fashion, get away from it as quickly as we can, as we do sometimes in our fire drills, that is our first choice of action. If evacuation is not available, then we go into a lockdown. Lockdown is we secure ourselves within a room, take the countermeasures we have available to us to secure that room, and wait till the police get arrived. The next thing would be is to counter. Counter is then going through the process of, if that intruder does come in the building, there's a psychology involved with the action of the shooter and trying to interrupt his mindset to delay him as long as possible as he can. And it's kind of hard, and in the training we were involved with, we did different scenarios, and we were really surprised. We've both been in law enforcement over 20 years, and we were amazed that, in the schooling they gave us, the training they gave us, how it took hold, that there is ways of interrupting that shooter's mindset, delaying his actions, and then, of course, taking the necessary action to alleviate the problem, to minimize any potential casualties. Why is citizen preparation proactive response necessary? The 25 years of mass shooting events have yielded a national average response time for law enforcement, and again, it's going to be five to six minutes. And we know that here. After Columbine, the training we received at Bethel Park Police, which was coming from the state police, which supervises the training in Pennsylvania, is that you cannot wait until that active shooter to the SWAT team gets there. By the time the SWAT team gets there, which would be anywhere from 20 minutes to an hour, that situation will exhaust itself. So they gave us training on, okay, wait till four or five policemen get there. Could be within one department, could be local, neighboring departments. And again, there's a delay in response at that time for those officers to get in to confront that active shooter. Our training has changed now where we are getting trained to confront that shooter one officer, two officers. Officer Zinsmeister, both and I have attended training this past summer through SHAIC, which is South Los Area Council Government, Police Association, on how to handle active shooters within a school. So we need to do things that are quicker than that five to six minutes.
Some of the statistics is something that was surprising to me. When we were doing the training, we did scenarios, and in the first scenario, out of 31 people, there were up to 18 people that were wounded in that scenario, and probably fatally. At the last scenario, when we completely implemented ALICE, out of 31 people, there were only three people wounded, and those wounds were in the extremities. They weren't fatal injuries. So I was surprised to see that. Law enforcement officers engaged in an active shooting situation, our shot accuracy is 18 to 22%, which I was very surprised that it was that low. Active shooters have an 80% accuracy, and the reason why is lockdown plays right into what they're trying to accomplish. Everyone's sitting still in a stationary location. They're easy targets for the person, and we're playing into their plan and what they want to accomplish. So, yeah, passive response is what lockdown is. Active response is what programs like ALICE are. And the most important thing, I think, to point out is that the passive response is no longer best practice. ALICE mirrors the recommendations of the Department of Education, Department of Homeland Security, New York Police Department. Many attorney generals are endorsing either this program or programs like it.
So it goes to show, in some of the most recent incidents, Columbine, Virginia Tech, and Sandy Hook, they talk about the wounded and casualty, and you can see the numbers there, they're highlighted. Columbine in 99, 12 were wounded, 10 were killed. Virginia Tech, 17 were wounded, 30 were killed. And unfortunately, the most recent incident in Connecticut was two were wounded and 26 were killed. Again, this is the approach. This is a show, a drawing of the library in Columbine. And there's an audio that goes with this, that shows that the teacher at that time, as the shots were being fired in Columbine in the hallways, and they can hear it echoing through the hallway, she goes on 911, she's giving the dispatcher updated information. In the meantime, she's telling her students what she was trained at that time. That was the training, the typical lockdown. Passive targets. Under the tables. Stay, hide, get under the tables. And in this library, to the right, on the circular part, is where the shooting was taking place, as he moved into the library. Back left-hand corner, I don't know if you can tell, there's exit doors. Exit doors will lead out of the library, lead into another part of the building, and eventually, if you can see in the upper left-hand corner, exits the building altogether. And that goes back to the ALICE training to evacuate. They had a chance to leave the building to minimize, and I believe there is six that were shot and killed here. It's kind of hard to see on the red, the dots on there, but where the shooting is going on there, instead of the instructing her kids to vacate the area, evacuate, she's telling them, traditional, what we've been doing all these years, stay put, help us on the way. And meantime, she left her children in harm's way, but that's what the training she had at that time. Like I said, it's okay to leave after the fact, but not before. And this is one of the things we're trying to change in our mindset here as we respond to active shooters. Is it really all they need to know in order to respond to a violent intruder? All right? Is it different types of forces that are complied, involved with this? Number of incidents in the applied force, these are trying to resolve everything, and you can see the number of incidents that a lot of time, it's like yesterday, the information we're getting from Nevada is that before the police were able to confront that young man, he had taken his own life after shooting a teacher and wounding two of his students. So if it's going to take an aggressive act to stop killing, why do we hope committing this act first? The idea was, how do we respond to that initial report of a shooter in our schools? All right, it's different in regards to how the response is and injuries, minimizing it, and how the victim can then minimize their casualty. If the goal is to mitigate casualties, we know type of resolution does that. It's taken an active role of that, our potential victim. Instead of being passive, we want to be active.
And that's what I was saying before. Department of Homeland Security, although it's different language, it's still the same concept. What they're promoting is the concept of get out is your first choice, which would be evacuate, hide out, which would be lockdown or conceal your whereabouts from the active killer, and take out is the counter part of ALICE. And I think it's important to point out what ALICE is not about. It's not about violence. It's not about fighting. It's not about defensive tactics. It's about interrupting the cognitive function of the shooter. There are very specific skills that are required to accurately shoot, and that's what ALICE is about, interrupting those things when it's necessary, and when it's not necessary, you get out or you lock down. But it's not, ALICE is not about aggression, it's about survivability. And everybody contributing to their own survivability, and because we're doing that as a group, we have a higher rate of survivability, rather than everyone, it kind of breaks the school culture a little bit. We're so used to everybody moving in groups, straight lines, a very orderly way of doing things, and ALICE is promoting something a little different from that, to everybody sort of independently react real-time information, rather than sitting and waiting for instruction. Because the person that's closest to the active killer, maybe the person that has the information that they need to act, rather than waiting to hear it from the PA system.
We can summarize it at this time, because these other groups are making the same recommendations. What we're doing right now, and we have done all the years we've been in law enforcement, is we do the typical, you know, lockdown, under the table, wait for the police to come. We recognize, with all these incidents happening across the country, is that that timeframe from the time the police get there, and what we're hoping in Bethel Park, as a good department as we have here, and responsive in the training we have, we're still looking three to four, five minutes. And even with officers inside the school, and as we're both moving around from building to building, and our guys are walking through the schools, we're doing a lot of proactive things, we still have to prepare just in case something does happen and an officer is not there, and it takes three to five minutes for him to get there. So one of the things, we want to get away from our traditional lockdown system. We want to get everybody involved, from the staff, the community, from the teachers, from the kids, from the parents, to recognize that we have to be prepared just in case something would happen in our community. And Lord forbid, you know, again, it does happen throughout the country. We're seeing too much of it. So we want to make sure our district is prepared. And honestly, in our communications with the police department and with the chief's office, and that is that this is something we look forward to taking throughout the community itself. This is just not a school response. This also can be in the workplace. And the school we went to, there was three representatives from Avon Industries there, because they also recognized that workplace violence has increased over these years too, that they also have to have a response to it. So we came with the board with permission to pursue in this matter, that we recognize we have to change what we were doing, and this is a program we see that fits our needs. It's recommended by other groups. Now, ALICE is a particular curriculum that we would work with our administrators and with our staff to implement within our school, but we do recognize that what we're doing traditionally has to change, and we have to adapt to what's going on. And that's basically what the ALICE program is going to bring to us.
So there is a practice, if you will, that you do with students in this particular program?
Yeah, there's a whole curriculum going through from staff, and again, we would sit down and work on how we would implement it within our school, you know, going from upper administrative level down to staff, teachers, and all those ways down to the students.
Because I know we practice like the lockdowns and...
Yes.
And there is curriculum for each age level. It is age-appropriate, and it's almost like a graduation process as a child moves through the school. They would be relying less on the judgment of the teacher and more on their own judgment as they get older.
They have it. And our training was interesting in the Sandy Hook, and I don't know how much national news it made, but during that chaos on there, there was a five-year-old boy, grabbed two of his classmates and said, "We need to get out of here now." Evacuated the building, went through the wooded area, and went to a safe house where an adult got him. That is the, on that five-year-old is what we're looking at. Take that information you have and make the best decision you can to increase your survivability. And for some reason, he was empowered, and he saved himself and two other kids. And this is what we're kind of looking for, even at five years old, the capability of a young student to do that. So this is what we're looking for to bring to our district.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, folks.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items?
Move the adoption.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 24, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held October 9, 2013, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. October 15, 2013, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. And October 22, 2013, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, I have several items of good news to share with you and our students about our schools. Six Bethel Park High School seniors were recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in its 2014 National Merit Scholarship Program. Jared Single and Brandon Hanson were named National Merit semifinalists, which means their scores on the PSAT that they took last year as juniors are among the top 16,000 in the nation. They have the opportunity to now advance to the finalist status and be eligible for one of more than 8,000 National Merit Scholarships that will be awarded next spring. Four seniors were named commended students, which means that their PSAT scores were among the top 50,000 in the country. Congratulations to Jonathan Anashenko, Christian Hokai, Sarah Ryland, and Liam Wolf for this outstanding achievement. Even though these students are not eligible for the National Merit Scholarships, their achievements merited a certificate from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Twenty-seven Bethel Park High School students have been named Advanced Placement Scholars by the College Board in recognition of their exceptional achievement in the college-level AP exams. Approximately 22% of the more than 2 million students worldwide that took AP exams last spring performed at a sufficiently high level to earn an AP Scholar Award. Daniel Snyder and Christian Hokai were named National AP Scholars. Three students were named AP Scholars with distinction. Congratulations to Kyle Baron, Caitlin Wagner, and Jared Single. Four students were named AP Scholars with honors. They are Kevin Burke, Dylan Reese, Jonathan Anashenko, and Liam Wolf. And 18 students were named AP Scholars. Congratulations to Stephen Barnhart, Juliana Buckwald, Kimberlyn Curtis, Ryan Dodson, Haley Dowd, Shannon Fagan, Matthew McCollack, Caitlin Michael, Divya Raghu, Rachel Wyda, Benjamin Brownfield, Stephen Everard, Brandon Hanson, Alex Clara, Haley Lazary, Kaylee Poe, Logan Tuitt, and Sean Varley. As AP Scholars, these students are able to earn college credits for their classwork they completed at Bethel Park High School students. Fifteen Bethel Park High School juniors were selected to participate in the 57th Westinghouse Science Honors Institute, a 10-week lecture series for juniors who are serious about learning more about science and engineering careers from experienced professionals. Congratulations to Amarietta Boldine, Colton Blair, Bryce Carter, Erin Copeland, Stephen Davis, Jake Ekinlob, Lauren Hensler, Emily Kukun, Taylor McCouriak Mananero, Brendan Moorhead, Jordan Miles, Keith Powell, Mackenzie Stark, Vincent Tavalletti, and Harrison Zelt. Besides attending lectures at Westinghouse, these students will also have the opportunity to tour the Bresley Nuclear Reactor at Penn State. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School Hometown IQ Team seniors Jared Single... Congratulations to Bethel Park High School Hometown Hi-Q Team seniors Jared Single and Haley Lazari and sophomore Jack Brownfield, who are in the audience this evening, who defeated teams from Springdale and Borough High School to win their first-round match of the K D K A Quiz Program and qualify for the playoffs. At this point, we do not know who their next-round opponents are or when their playoff episode will air, but we wish them the best of luck as they advance through the competition. Bethel Park Senior Liam Wolf was named the September Student of the Month by the Rotary Club of Bethel Park. Each month, the Rotary recognizes a Bethel Park High School student who demonstrates outstanding school and community service. Liam was offered for his vast involvement in student life at Bethel Park High School, including serving as Student Government Association Vice President and Community Service Chair, National Honor Society Soccer and Math Team, as well as his volunteer work for his church. All Bethel Park Elementary students learned to be a buddy, not a bully, thanks to an assembly performed at all five schools this fall by After-School Buddy. The assemblies were brought to Bethel Park, were brought to Bethel Park by Bethel Park Mayor Jeff Cliff Morton, who wanted to do something positive for our schools before his tenure as mayor ends. We thank Mayor Morton for his support of the Bethel Park School District over the years and for caring enough to bring this program to our schools, which tied in nicely with our bully prevention efforts at the elementary level. The assemblies were coordinated by Dr. Dee Stark, who worked with the After-School Buddy people to develop an assembly that was created especially for Bethel Park. Thank you, Dr. Stark and Mayor Morton, for making these programs a reality for our students. That wasn't a DVD rental stand in the Franklin Elementary School lobby this fall. Instead of a red box, it was a read box, and the display was put there to encourage Franklin students to participate in this year's Read-A-Thon, in which the students read over twenty-nine thousand minutes on their own and collected pledges from families, neighbors, and friends to help the Franklin P T O fund upcoming school projects and events this school year. Eighteen students read over five hundred minutes. The top reader was fourth grader Shelby Yonish, who read one thousand nine hundred minutes. Two other fourth graders, Riley Smith and Zach Simmons, also read over a thousand minutes. Congratulations to all the students who committed themselves to reading. Bethel Park High School will stage the Shakespeare classic, A Midsummer Night's Dream, in its, as its fall play, Thursday through Saturday, November fourteenth through sixteenth, at seven thirty P M. in the Bethel Park High School auditorium. Tickets are five dollars and can be purchased at the door on performance evenings. Rehearsals for the production are underway, and B P T V is filming a show about this year's production, which will air in early November, leading up to the production. We hope you will be able to join us for this magical evening of theater. You have until Thursday, October thirty-first, Halloween, to submit your nominations for the 2014 Bethel Park High School Great Alumni Hall of Fame. The Hall annually recognizes Bethel Park graduates who have demonstrated outstanding accomplishments either personally or professionally since graduating from Bethel Park High School. Nomination forms are on the alumni page of the Bethel Park High School homepage. Thank you for taking the time to tell us about our outstanding alumni. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Student government.
Hello, my name is Harrison Zelt, and I serve as the Junior School Board Representative for Student Government. For Student Government, recently, we have conducted our homeroom representative elections, and our first meeting for that will be upcoming before the end of the month. Also, before the end of the month, we plan to get in our freshman officers' elections and have a meeting with them. And our next staff appreciation meeting will be about our Secret Santa activity that we do around Christmas time. And we also have an activity coming up around in the winter, a dodgeball tournament that we will be raising money for the Four Diamonds Fund and donating all our proceeds to that. Thank you.
Great, thanks. P T A, P T O Council.
My name is Dawn Hughes, and I'm a co-president at George Washington Elementary.
And I'm Christy Odom, co-president.
At George Washington Elementary, this week is Red Ribbon Week, and the students of George Washington are making pledges stating, "We don't fall for drugs." Each day, students will make a pledge to be drug-free with creative artwork that will be displayed around the school. Officer Zee was at the school this morning for a short assembly to talk with the students about being drug-free as well as bus safety and Halloween safety tips. The Sarah's Candy and Yankee Candle fundraiser is now underway and runs until November first. Tomorrow evening is Spirit Night at Chick-fil-A from five to eight P M. The school earns fifteen percent of the sales. The first fourth-grade activity will be held on Sunday, November tenth, at Legacy Lanes. Teacher appreciation dinner is coming up on the night of November eleventh. The first week of October, the Fall Scholastic Book Fair was held in the library, and the students were able to visit the book fair twice during the week, during the regular-scheduled library time. We had many parents and grandparents that came in to volunteer throughout the day. Officer Ragadi came in the first week of October and made child safety IDs for all the kindergartners, second, and fourth graders. We would like to thank the Police Pals Program for sponsoring this great event. G W students had a successful Read-A-Thon with Usborne's Reach for the Stars Program. The students read a total of forty-four thousand nine ninety-six minutes and received two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight in pledges to do so. Fifty percent of that pledge money went to the students to purchase Usborne books, twenty-five of it went to the teachers to purchase books for their classrooms, and twenty-five went to the P T O, which will be used for various activities throughout the year. And our rerun Running Club will soon start to get things underway in preparation for the Kids of Steel Pittsburgh Kids Marathon in May of 2014. Memorial Elementary. Memorial wrapped up their Yankee Candy so, candy candle, excuse me, sale for their fall fundraiser. They raised almost four thousand nine hundred for the P T A and can still accept online orders through January. They would like to thank everyone who participated as these funds help us provide all the activities they have for the students. Officer Ragadi came in and did child safety IDs this week, and we had several parent volunteers to help with that and had around seventy-five percent participation of our kindergarten, second, and fourth graders. This Thursday, October twenty-fourth, is the Fall Festival at the school, and Friday, October twenty-fifth, is the fourth-grade bonfire hayride at Simmons Farm. On Monday, October twenty-eighth, is Spirit Night at Chick-fil-A South Hills. So please come out, five to eight, and get some dinner and tell the cashier you're there to support Memorial Elementary. November first is the First Family Bingo Night. On November seventh, they will be kicking off their Sarah's Candy Sale for the Holidays. November eighth, we'll have the student stores once again for the kids during recess. On November eleventh, they will be doing a dinner for the teachers who will be at the school, doing conferences all day. And November thirteenth through fifteenth is their Scholastic Fall Book Fair in the library, and they are hoping to help get books in the hands of every child in the school to promote reading at every level.
I'm a little short for the microphone. I M S. Beginning today, I M S is celebrating Red Ribbon Week with many activities planned through November first. The students will participate in events such as viewing a video on the origin of Red Ribbon Week, S S R pertaining to Red Ribbon Week, Rachel's Challenge, a school assembling, a homeroom door decorating contest, Red Rally Day where students will wear red, Halloween treats, and a Crazy Boot Day. Planning for the annual I M S Holiday Vendor, which I've already seen signs for that, and craft show is well underway. The craft show will take place on Saturday, November thirtieth, in the I M S Cafeteria from nine to three P M. The I M S P T S O has just launched their brand-new website. Information on events sponsored by the I M S P T S O will be available on the site. Please check it out at W W W dot I M S P T S O dot org. Abraham Lincoln. During the second week of October, the students were excited to purchase new books from the book fair that was held in the library. The students enjoyed browsing the shelves filled with great children's literature. Many parents volunteered their time to add a helping hand. On Friday, October the eleventh, the Fall Festival is held by Fourth-Grade Events Committee. This event was very successful and a great time was had by all. There were many activities held inside and outside for the students and their families. Abraham Lincoln P T O appreciates the support from the families, which continues to make Lincoln a great place to be.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Slizzi's report.
Yes, I provided the board with our written report. I have one item which I'd like to highlight, which is the status of the teacher negotiations, kind of a follow-up to what I reported at the committee meeting last week, which is that both sides, the district and the union, have accepted the Factfinders' recommendations in the negotiations. Our office confirmed with the Labor Relations Board that the acceptance of the Factfinders' report does not require a public vote by the board, rather, it's part of the negotiations process. What will happen, though, is that there will be a public vote of the board when the final contract is prepared, which is going to incorporate what the recommendations of the Factfinder are. The acceptance of the Factfinders' report obligates both sides to work cooperatively to incorporate what the Factfinders' recommendations were into a new contract. I'm pleased to report that since last week, since the committee meeting, the parties have been meeting, progress has been made, I would say substantial progress has been made, and we should have a final contract for board action within the very near future.
Thank you. And we do have a meeting tentatively scheduled for Monday, October twenty-eighth.
And that meeting, and that meeting is for...
I'm sorry, special meeting scheduled for Monday, October twenty-eighth for ratification of the contract. Tentatively, yes, any committee reports. Do we have any committee meetings since the past? Public comments on agenda items. Now is the time for our student who wants to speak.
Hello, my name is Jared Single, and I'm currently a senior here at Bethel Park High School. I also serve as captain of the debate team. I'd first like to say thank you all so much for honoring my coach, Mrs. Urson, tonight with an award. It means a lot to all of us, and we really appreciate all of your support throughout the years. I'd just like to give a little bit of a background about myself. In 2012, my partner and I won the Policy Debate State Championship, and last year, in 2013, we qualified to the national tournament. As you can see, forensics has clearly helped me greatly. It's made me a confident, articulate, and well-prepared public speaker, and I'm very thankful that I got the opportunity for it. However, as our success has increased, it has become increasingly difficult to compete, especially with the surrounding schools that we compete with on our local circuit. For example, schools like North Allegheny and Pittsburgh Central Catholic are able to pay for the entirety of their team's registration, travel, as well as other expenses. More commonly, schools that surround us, like Peters Township, Upper St. Clair, and to the best of my knowledge, Mount Lebanon, at least receive partial funding from their school district. Naturally, with our limited resources, it's very, very hard to compete with these teams consistently. Although we have managed to do that for the past few years, it's becoming increasingly more difficult as expenses increase. We've also noticed that every member of our team has paid the fifty-dollar activities fee. If we multiply this out, that comes to a total of two thousand one hundred dollars paid for the forensics team. Despite this, the team has received zero dollars in school funding. If even a fraction of this amount could be given to forensics, this would drastically help us increase our involvement so that we would be able to compete more often and also pay our tournament costs effectively. So with that being said, thank you all very much for all the opportunities that you've given me and the forensics team as a whole, and I really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Molly Graham, I'm the captain of the forensics team. Hey, guys. And I'm just following up on what Jared said, just a little more specifics into our budget. Last year, the cost of local competition to the team was four thousand five hundred and two dollars. This cost included league dues, entry fees, judge fees, and the use of district school buses. Another five hundred dollars plus was spent on play scripts, news magazines, debate handbooks, and other essentials for preparing a team for competition. Additionally, the team members and their families had to pay for individual memberships to the Honor Society and for their insignias, which is our pens. Above these costs, over fifty percent of our team competed at the state and national levels. Additional costs entailed were four hundred forty-eight dollars in entry fees and hotel costs of over four thousand dollars. Transportation to these competitions amounted to four thousand one hundred dollars. We meet a fraction of our financial obligations via fundraising donations and parental support. Our main fundraiser is our nationally-recognized tournament, which attracts schools from four other states, such as New York, Ohio, West Virginia, and Maryland. After expenses, we realized a profit of four thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Yet, at the end of the school year, we received a bill of over one thousand five hundred dollars for custodial fees, which we were forgiven, but only for that year. We are informed that such forgiveness was just for that year. With parental support of approximately five thousand three hundred dollars, we were able to meet our financial obligations and had approximately forty dollars left in the activities fund to begin our new year. I respectfully ask of the board, what suggestions might you have now so that we can raise enough money to sustain our team throughout the next year?
Molly and Jared, if you could please provide us with your written statements so that we can look into your situation, that would be helpful to me. You don't have to do it right now, you can send it to me via email. Okay. Thank you. And thanks for your well-prepared remarks.
Pam Dobis, five-five-five-eight Beverly Court. I was at the committee meeting last week, and regarding the staff changes, there wasn't any mention made about opening a full-time maintenance supervisor position. Maybe you had it in your notes, but you didn't talk about it that day, so we didn't hear about it. So I was wondering if, when you get to that point, somebody could talk about the need for this, since it is opening another full-time position.
This item is not on the agenda and boardly thirty-six eighty Ashland Drive. It's not on the agenda, it's about the agenda. Last week, there were several of us here, we received an agenda for a meeting, which I must say was totally useless because it contained no specific information, and none of it was discussed by the board. So when you come to audience participation, which is prior, you have no ability to ask any question or to make any comments because there's nothing on the agenda. And after the meeting, we talked to a few people, and a suggestion was made that maybe we download the agenda from the meeting for tonight, so not as many agendas would have to be printed. I downloaded, well, I went on the internet to look at the agenda at a quarter to eight tonight. It is not this agenda.
It was to be on this morning. The agenda that was printed was online this morning.
The business about staffing changes only said that you approved the administration's recommendation to approve the following staffing changes.
Okay, if that's a personnel item, no, the personnel items will not be on, we can't put personnel items out in a pre...
Well, the fact that you're going to now have one full-time maintenance supervisor is certainly something that should be put on the agenda. It's here now, but it wasn't here at seven forty-five tonight. I understand you can't put the names in...
Right.
But we didn't even know that we were going to have a full-time maintenance supervisor until tonight. I just think it would be a help to you and to those of us in the audience if you either gave additional more information prior to your committee meeting or had more discussion from board members at the committee meeting, because as it currently is, it is non-beneficial to both sides. And I have one other thing, and that's if the Factfinders' report will ever be made available as a Factfinders' report or if it will only be available in the final contract.
To my knowledge, it will only be available in the final contract.
In the final contract. So we'll never see what the Factfinder decided.
It will be incorporated into the contract language.
That's correct. The Factfinders' report is part of the negotiation process, and negotiation materials, proposals, counter-proposals, those types of things are not open to the public.
So... So if somebody refuses the Factfinder report, we're allowed to see it?
Well, it's published under state law. That's a different situation.
But if it's approved, we have to go through the contract and try to guess what the Factfinder decided.
That's, that's the law.
That's it.
That's not a decision by the board or by the Federation. That's the law.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items this evening? Then we will move into business items, Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are two items this evening under curriculum. Would any, like any of those held out? Hearing none, I move the, under curriculum number one, the approval of curricula, and number two, conference attendance.
Second.
Items one and two, under Curriculum Committee, have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
I took the last four days, five days, and had the opportunity to read rather briefly and briskly through the curriculum. The books, the textbooks, I had a chance to review as well, and they are, they're solid. They're very great factual material. Some of my concerns, though, aren't so much what's in them, it's in the books or in the curriculum. It's really what's, what's not in the books and what's not in the curriculum. And those are some of the things I'd like to talk about. I'm, I'm a biologist in training. I was a biologist for one in medicine. And in the ecology section, I was not surprised to read Rachel Carson's, you know, references in her 1962 book Silent Spring, and the impact of DDT on the eagle population, the eggshells that took place. I was kind of surprised to see that it was mentioned in the other two books, the history of the world, you know, world history texts, as well as the American history texts. In itself, it's not too, too bad. I think Rachel Carson was probably the, the godmother, so to speak, of the ecology movement in the, in the 60s and 70s, but it doesn't mention anything about the tens, no, hundreds of millions of people who died from malaria as a consequence of that decision. I'm just, I'm going to just mention a couple of different examples as well. In the world history books also, it talks about the rise of communism and the social, the social changes that took place at the time that was driving, motivating the Bolsheviks, Mao Zedong, and what transferred, transpired in communist Russia and communist China. What it doesn't mention is Stalin's pogroms, his tens of millions who were killed. Mao Zedong's Great Leap Forward, the 60 million people who died in that. These aren't mentioned, you know, at all in the book. One other thing I just kind of found, again, in the world history text, there's 15 pages dedicated to the Islamic faith. Large print headers for most of these chapters, life of Muhammad, teachings of Muhammad, prosperity in the Islamic world, Islamic society, including equality of women, establishing the blessings of Sharia law within this as well. In small print, four pages dedicated to Christianity, nothing on the life of Christ, nothing on the life, you know, well, one small paragraph, small print, small header, on Christian teaching, Christian doctrine. About the same on Judaism, Buddhism, Confucianism. You know, there's a little bit of disparity here that kind of raises my thing. If this isn't even a comparative religion class, but yet we're talking theology, you know, and dedicating large portions to it. I am non-Islam and Islamophobe at all. I work with more Buddhists, more Muslims than I work with Christians in my job across the board. Every single one of my six kids have dated somebody else other than a Christian faith at one time or another, for goodness sake. I'm non-Islamophobe, but why the disparity in the book? Now, my question and my concern is the text or the framework in which we're going to drape the curriculum on top of. I understand that, all right? Perhaps we need to be a little bit wiser in choosing our curricula. I understand that we, as a board, and we, as a school district, have control over what goes on the curriculum, what's said in the classroom. You know, I would like to make sure that that is fair and balanced. That's all I care about. Again, it's not so much what's mentioned. Everything in the books, I thought, was factual, great across the board. I love the American history section. I thought it was great. But when it comes down to some of the disparities and how things are painted, you could see subtle agendas that are being dispelled, you know, that's pushed here. And are our teachers being compelled to teach that? I wonder. So those are some of my concerns with the curriculum I'd like to say before we add a vote.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on curriculum items? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
One abstention.
Opposed.
Are you voting no or abstention?
I guess I should vote no. I will vote no.
That was only to accept it as it is, Donna?
I voted no.
What was the question? Was it to accept it as it was, or to look into it further? What?
We were, we were moving the approval of the curriculum for American, honors biology, American history, one, and world histories honors, and the conference attendance.
As they would be using the, well-
As these folks wrote them.
Okay. I'm voting no, too.
Can I recommend a roll call?
Yeah, that would be good, because I was trying to do my addition here. I have eight members, right?
You want to separate the items as well?
Are you voting no on the conferences, too, or do you want me to separate the items out?
Let me make a motion to separate the two items.
We're going to, we're going to separate them.
Second.
All in favor of separating the items out, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Buckley, will you take those and move them separately now for me?
Yes. I will move them separately. Number one, the approval of the curricula, which includes honors biology, American history one, and world history honors.
I need a second, too.
Second. Second.
Okay. Item one has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs., Mr. Rose. We're going to do a roll call on item one.
Mr. Emmett.
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
No.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
No.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Yes.
That motion carries five to three. Mrs. Buckley, item two.
Thank you. Item number two is conference attendance, and that would be for the PASBO Annual Conference in Hershey, and then the PA Federal Program Coordinators Conference in Seven Springs.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Item two, under curriculum, has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Rose. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
I move that we approve items one through five. Are there any to be held out? What about item three? Should that not discuss it?
We can just have a explanation on-
Okay.
Or item four, I think it's item four.
Item four.
Question on?
Is that coming?
Did you move? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Items-
I would just, and I would just ask that under the alternate education program, that our, our business manager, Mr. Howard, just, just give a brief description, as you did at the meeting the other evening, about the possible, you know, cost savings that are associated with having this program.
Okay, let me just do my thing, and then we'll go to that. Items one through five have been moved, under personnel, have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Dr. Campbell. Now, any questions or comments on any of these items?
Well, certainly, item four was brought up by a couple of folks, and to want to move in more information.
Need explanation. Yep.
You know, we've, we've done great work in trying to, like, curtail as many positions, save as much money as possible. Can please explain a little bit more about this, this full-time maintenance supervisor position?
I'll do David's comments first, and then I'll just roll right into Dr. Campbell's. First, David, I think you had asked about the savings associated with our alternative education program. Right now, I think we have between 20 and 25 students in our alternative education program. Our, the program costs, on average, over the past couple of years, between $100 and $125,000. If we place some of these students in an outside program, the individual student could cost up to, up to $20,000 to $25,000. So if you do the math, if we placed all of the students out, it could be between $500 and $600,000 to educate those students. So our alt-ed program is running very efficiently for us. And also, it is, it is a small revenue producer for us also. We have students right now, I think, from Upper St. Clair and maybe South Park, Ryan?
We had South Park last year, but not so much.
So right now, we, we do have some students from Upper St. Clair. We've opened it up to South Park, Mount Lebanon. Also, I think we've had other inquiries, too. So, you know, this is, this is a good program for us, and it, I think it's operating, you know, effectively from an educational standpoint also.
Thank you.
The second issue with question was with regard to the change of assignment of, of maintenance supervisor position. This is a promotion of somebody within our department, and to, it actually is to replace the elimination of a position that we eliminated with the Aramark, with our contract with Aramark. We weren't contracting out for two individuals with Aramark. They had a director of custodial maintenance service, and then an assistant director. So we eliminated the assistant director, which saved the district about $46,000. We promoted this individual. We gave him an additional $10,000, so we have a net savings of $36,000 when you, when you put everything together there. So we had a reduction, to summarize, we had a reduction on the Aramark contract, and we'll have a small increase with a staff member that has highly deserved this, this promotion.
And to clarify, the position from which this person is being promoted is not being filled, so we have not-
Right.
-added another person to the staff. We've just given a promotion to one person, savings of $36,000 to the district. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Any other questions on Personnel Committee items? All in favor of items one through five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero.
Facilities and Services Committee, Mr. Spicuzza, will you take that for me this evening?
I was ready for that.
I knew that would be.
Seeing one item under Facility and Services this evening, I would move the following item, approval of change orders for the Armstrong Middle School project. The change orders are order number EC-002, that's the electrical construction, replace existing electrical panel, interiors to, to pit electric, in the amount of $47,000, $47,922.57, and change order HV-002 to the HVAC contractor, replacing existing chiller return piping to Legalia Mechanical in the amount of $13,013.6.
Will you use second?
Second.
Thank you. Item one, under Facilities and Services Committee, has been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item?
Just, okay. Go ahead. All I was going to ask, Mrs. Cook, is if Mr. Howard could give a little brief explanation. I know we talked about it at the committee meeting, and I'd like the audience to know what we discussed and why we did what we did.
Sure.
I'm going to ask Buzzy to interject on this first one, because he, if, if I had missed anything. Right now, we have, over at New Armstrong, we have original electrical panels over there from when the building was built. They're old Westinghouse panels, which we can no longer get, get parts for. Also, these panels have a tendency not to trip because of their age. So if, if we get a power surge or anything, it, it has a tendency not to, to release the breaker. So that's the reasoning for replacing those. There's 20, 21 of them, I think, that we need to replace over there. The second issue is just some chiller piping. This is the piping, the main piping that are coming off the three chillers that we have at, at the, at NAMs. This, we thought we could use this piping as part of the, of the program, but as we got into it, we realized that it would be better if we replaced it. This would probably have replaced then about 95% of the piping in the building moving forward.
Are these monies still coming from our construction?
Yeah, these, these monies are still within the contingency that we had built for the New Armstrong Middle School project.
No, initially, we had planned about, about roughly five or six million dollars for the project.
That's correct.
On budget, under budget with these changes?
We are, we are currently a little bit under budget, and that's why we were still under budget with these change orders. That's why we were able to make these improvements to the building. So in total, we're under budget.
Mr. Means, did you have a question?
Mr. Spicuzza, I ask it, so I'm done.
Mr. Emmett, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just trying to, to get, if I recall, the last meeting, that these, that the project is now at its completion, if I'm, if I'm correct from our presentation the other day from Mr. Disso, we should not be receiving many, if any, more change orders. Am I correct?
Yeah, there were, these are the last change orders for the project.
Very good.
Thank you. Finance Committee and Mr. Rose.
There are nine.
You need a vote, don't you?
We did vote, yeah.
I'm sorry.
We had the motion. We did vote.
All in favor of item one, under Facilities and Services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries H to zero.
No.
Now Finance Committee.
There are nine items under the Finance Committee agenda. Any board member like any of those held up separately? I move the following items, the October 2013 salaries and bills, the September 2013 financial report, budgetary transfers, approval of Pennsylvania educator contract, which is the system we use for online job applications, approval of student services contract, waterfront learning services with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Agreement, approval of the purchase of classroom furniture, acceptance of donations, which are two new nets for the goals on the soccer field for the Bethel Park Soccer Association, and items declared unused and unnecessary. I move the approval of those labels.
Second. Items one through nine, under Finance Committee, have been moved by Mr. Rose and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? I would just like to once again thank our soccer boosters. They have phenomenally stepped up with donations this school year.
Just, I just wanted to clarify that, that, that's, the donation of the nets was from the soccer association and not our high school boosters, just, just for clarification.
From rec.
From rec.
Rec, okay. Well-
Same, same type of group, same soccer booster.
Soccer parents, yes. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion, those motions carry H to zero. Mr. Emmett, would you take other for me this evening?
I believe I can handle that. There is one item under other. It's the ALIS system that we have heard the presentation on from Officer Modrak and Officer Zensmeister. ALIS, the Alert Lockdown Inform, Counter Evacuate Program. The motion reads, the Board of Director approves the administration's recommendation to approve the implementation of the ALIS training program as a proactive approach for safety for all the schools in the Bethel Park School District. I move number one under other.
Second.
Item one, under other, has been moved by Mr. Emmett and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on this item? Mr. Means?
Yeah, I, I think this is a really good idea. I think it's something that has to be done, but I am curious, are there going to be other costs associated with this?
Training of staff, I guess, Mr. Means.
Okay.
Reducing the cost of training.
They'll be rather minimal, though, correct? Okay.
Will we do this as part of our in-service training, or?
It will be part of the in-service training. In addition, a group of administrators will begin meeting tomorrow. We're preparing a Safe Schools Grant that we hope will bring in some funds as well. And it'll be a comprehensive grant that will cover, hopefully, if we get it, if we're successful, in part, this training, as well as possible reimbursement of our school resource officer and some other costs for upgrading facilities and those kinds of things as well.
Now, Officer Modrak and Officer Zensmeister are qualified trainers, correct?
They've been certified.
Is there any possibility they will be training people in other school districts?
That might be something that we would entertain in the future, but we'll leave that to a discussion for Officer Modrak and Officer Zensmeister. We're going to have our hands full for some time to come in training our own staff and preparing them.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll be busy for a while.
Any other questions on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Public comments, anything you wish to address the board on?
I really appreciate Dr. Campbell's remarks about the textbook. I really appreciate Dr. Campbell's remarks about the textbook. And I think while you still have control, it's the duty of the boards, local boards, to find out what's in these textbooks. This household has been troubled for many years. You know, Lenin said, "Brainwash the children and you take over a nation," among other things that he said. And I keep thinking that over and over. And I think a little more thought should be given, because where are we now in America? That's why I also questioned Common Core. Sounds good in the beginning, folks, but this is probably the first stage of government control of education. And you have to realize that many totalitarian regimes now had centralized education. You have to watch out for the young people. So, thank you, Dr. Campbell, and those who voted against, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tom Jermick, fifty-four sixty Glen Hill Drive. Mr. Howard, I'd like to thank you for your comments about Alt Ed, but this goes back to our comments before the meeting. Alt Ed was discussed, and I'm all in favor of Alt Ed and the program that we have put together here. But that was discussed at the committee meeting and it wasn't even on the agenda. I looked at my notes and I handwrote, there was nothing on the committee meeting agenda about Alt Ed. It was brought up today as part of an item on this agenda. I believe it was under Personnel Committee and I don't see it anywhere.
There was not an item on the agenda regarding Alt Ed.
Oh, so we approved something that's not on the agenda?
We did not approve anything regarding Alt Ed. Mr. Ammons just asked for a statement to be made regarding the cost savings that have occurred with our Alt Ed program.
Okay, and that had nothing to do with the Personnel Committee section?
No, it happened on a committee meeting agenda never before.
To clarify, there was a science position for Alt Ed that we had hoped to fill. We did not have a candidate and so that was not being filled, so it was not on the agenda. There had been prior discussion, but it, it never made it to the agenda.
Then I apologize for my confusion, the discussion was out and I had no notes in reference to that.
Sure, thank you.
Pam Dobis, five-five-five-eight Beverly Court. I'd like to applaud your vote for the ALIS program. I think it's something that is needed in the schools and I'm very confident in the two people who will be implementing it. I just would like to request that when you implement it and review it, that you do it more than once a year. In my experience, fire drills are held every month and they're, they're very important. I, I, I would, I would hope that this would be practiced more than once a year.
Thank you.
Master Sergeant John Delalo, fifteen sixty-five Lucille Drive. I too want to congratulate those of you that have had the courage to vote down the curriculum. Common Core is not something I believe that we want in our schools. I believe that the curriculum needs to be, as Dr. Campbell had indicated, fair and balanced. And indeed, it is not. I'm a member of several political action committees and we have studied Common Core and indeed, it is not fair and balanced and indeed, does not conform to the Constitution of these great United States. Nikita Khrushchev said somewhere around nineteen sixty, "We will bury you." In nineteen sixty-eight, Walter Cronkite said, "The war in Vietnam is unwinnable." And a complicit media fell right in line. And we were defeated, not by communist troops, but by our own people right here. Beware of Common Core. The only other question I had this evening, and I believe you can answer this one, you mentioned a meeting on October the twenty-eighth. Is that going to be an executive session or will that be open?
That will be an open meeting.
Thank you.
It is a tentative date.
Thank you very much.
Denise Dillon, fifty-nine sixty-nine Monaga Hill. I just wanted to thank the board, Jim Modrak, Officer Z. I like that the school district has taken a proactive stance. Scary, especially after yesterday. I know there's a lot of wackadoodles out there that want people to, the teachers to be armed, which I don't think should ever be even thought of. I just really appreciate that Jim's here, full-time. I like Jim, I've known Jim for years, more than qualified, I'm glad you hired him and I'm glad that you're doing this program. Even though it was giving me chills when he was making the presentation, because I just feel it's horrible even having to think about it. But again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know exactly what the student government, or the forensic league was requesting, but I do know the value of this forensic program from my own experience with one of my children. And you could just, by looking at them, they have learned and they spoke well. I'm hoping that you will at least fund that program as you do some of the others as far as transportation and registration. I hope that you will be able to look at the figures they're giving you and be able to contribute to that group. We don't always see them here, we see their awards sometime on Good News, but I think it's an important organization in, in our school. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move into board comments then. Mr. Ammons.
I get to go first this evening and I do have a couple of comments. It's, it's always so good to see when I'm looking at the report, all the accolades our, our students received and it's so hard to ignore. Instead of congratulate individually, I just throw out a congratulations to everyone involved. And, and, and as listening to the forensic, the, the students that came up with the forensic data, to me, nothing tugs at my heart more than when students come up to the microphone requesting funds, especially well-prepared students and students that spoke as eloquently as that. And they're not here now, but I'm sure they'll get the message, so I just wanna say that we'll try to look into any way we can to see if we can increase some of the funding to that. At least I, I will say that I will, will try to do that, because again, it does it. It tugs at my heart. So, as for the comments for the agendas not being here, just again, the history about that, years, for years, I don't think that it's been brought to the board's attention that the information out there wasn't as adequate as it was supposed to have been, whether, we, we did a step a few years ago and put it on, online to give people the heads up to it and we weren't quite sure. Since it's been brought to our attention now, we're trying to rectify and trying to give more information out there. We thought that it was going to be today for this meeting and obviously, it wasn't, but we're still trying to work with it because it's not something we're trying to hide at all from the public in any way. We're just trying to be cooperative with the problem that's been brought to the attention.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell.
I thought a great forensics question would be, are they clip-on ties or are they bow ties real? You know, the ties, I just wanted to know. Just as an FYI, for nineteen hundred minutes in the Read-a-thon, that's thirty-one point six seven hours of reading. Kudos to that little student. I mean, I thought that was awesome, you know, get that much reading and that was pretty neat. Great things are transpiring and great things are falling into place. You know, by virtue of the fact that the, the teachers and the teachers' union have accepted the, the Fact Finder Report, the district has accepted the Fact Finder Report, that puts a big collective sigh of relief in the community, I believe. I really, truly believe. Did everybody get what they wanted? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. But was it acceptable to both, both parties, that they were really actively engaged in this? Yes. And I think that, that's, that says something. We have a custodial contract. We have a transportation workers' contract. We've kept our own buses within the district across the board. We finished this NAMs project, hopefully, under budget. We're in the final phases, finally, we, I think we had our last couple of change orders at the high school, too, and getting some of the, the turf in place. That was nice. It's, it's moving forward and there's still so much work to be done yet. There's still so much work to be done. It's nice to have a lot of these issues behind us, which were so contentious and so, so dividing, but there's so many things that we really need to work forward on. We've got the Logan School Project. We need to talk about how to continue to build our infrastructure, update our schools, modernize our schools, make them safe, you know, and secure. We've heard today with the ALIS program, I think that's an incredible initiative. I'm very much into preparedness across the board and I, I'd like to see that, that was engaged, you know, this evening. Dave mentioned also, as far as the, the handouts that you get prior to the board meetings. This is all about transparency, you know? This is, well, everybody should have this information across the board. Some things by necessary names need to be kept out for some purpose, certainly disciplinary items, but there's no, no reason why we should not be able to get more of this information, online and printed at both the meetings. And, you know, we have a lot of dedicated Corps of Folks who come to our meetings consistently. You know, they're interested in the, in the school district, they're interested in the policies that transpire, they're interested in the programs and the things that are voted upon. There's no reason why we can't, you know, do that. So, a lot of great projects have been kinda tapped up, finished up, a lot of great things to go yet, too. And that's how, what I'm learning, you know, with the school board as well. You've heard me said many times, I'm still new to the board, it's only been two years, but I'm still, and I remain on the steep part of the learning curve. So much transpires, so much, you know, takes place and each of us are involved. It's our school district, it's our community, it's our students. We care. That's all I want to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Roll.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for all your comments. I want to first report that with Steel Center, I understand that Kevin Rice was here last meeting and spoke to all of you in regards to the Steel Center School and what all they're doing there. But I just want to tell you tonight that we are the top school of eighteen school districts. We've sent the most students this year. We have ninety-four students enrolled in VOTEC. That really tells you, and that's where a lot of the jobs are and, I mean, where the skills are right now. So, I think that's a really good, good showing at, at Steel Center as they continue to work and improve what all they have to offer. The other thing is I want to thank the AIU for sending me to the conference, school boards conference. I haven't been to one in ten years, 'cause we don't do that anymore, but they sent me as a representative and it was just really great and refreshing to be among the schools in the rest of the state, to hear what's going on and, you know, to know that you're not alone in some situations, a lot of similar things. But we did have a speaker that, his name was Dr. Pedro Guera, and he, it was a classroom teacher, he was a school board member, he was a recipient from the University of California for a Distinguished Teaching Award. He's now a professor at Steinhardt School of Education in New York and he also works with global, global education. And the one thing that he said, and he began his statements by saying that every child should have an opportunity to succeed. And what he said, the following statement was indicative through the whole conference. The child development was important, not test scores. That was his comment. They are just one aspect of the child. And that oftentimes, that we put so much emphasis just on the test scores, but forget the rest of the components that make up a well-developed child or student. And that was the theme of the whole conference. I then attended a segment on careers and where that was going, because that happened to be an area that I focus a lot on. And the one thing there was that PDE, the Department of Education, has brought on two consultants. One is a business individual and the other one is an educator, guidance counselor. They are going to be going throughout the state and they will be working with all of the guidance departments and that, to try and bring a total concept of business into the school, so that the guidance counselors and the students and the parents, it's gonna be a total educational process. And they will be evaluated on it. But the education process will have to include the parents, the students, guidance counselors, you know, the boards, everyone that's involved in the development of that child. We will also have to have a plan in place that will feed right into the VOTEC school. That will have to be part of their plan, they will be audited on that and PDE will be auditing that. So, it's a whole big different movement around the career segment and it just sounds great. The AIU, I did speak to Dr. Hipper and she is going to bring that in to the AIU so that all of our schools then will have an opportunity to really become a part of this movement early on. So, we're gonna try to bring them in pretty early. We'll be inviting our counselors and everyone. That'll be up to us to educate the parents, because now, a lot of parents don't really know what's out there. I mean, they're in their own segments, a lot of them have lost their jobs, they don't, they're not aware of what employers are looking for. The whole world of work has changed and we need to get our students focused in that direction. And the things that they said, because they've done a survey, that the top things that employers are still looking for and are, that you can work in a team, that communication is vital. Communication is right up their second skill that they're looking for in importance. And that the, as a student, the individual can make good decisions, they understand the decision-making process, they don't depend on just all the electronic gadgets to get them there.
Connie, do they differentiate between oral communication and written communication?
They stated them both, both oral and written were equally important, right up there. And your planning and organizing and your analysis of quantitative dat- data. Computers came down about fifth from the bottom up, because that's your vehicle that you use to, but you don't want to lose those other skills. So, those are the things that the employers are looking for. And they gave us a list of jobs and all types of information. So, it's gonna be really good. I'm looking forward to them coming into our school district and to help us get moving. And I understand that, kudos to the Guidance Counselor's Office, that they did begin their work this year and brought in some speakers, Dr. Campbell was a part of that, if you wanted to say anything.
No.
But it's good that we're on move.
Absolutely not. I just kinda saw a need and they said they have a hard time getting docs, so that's all.
To talk about those different careers out there.
And they said the parents still are fifty percent of influencing the student and that they have to be, become informed and they have to understand, you know, the needs of that student and how to get them to where they need to be to help them succeed. That's gonna be a total process.
Takes a village.
Mr. Rose.
Congratulations to all those awardees that we saw in the beginning of the meeting, but special congratulations to the Sixth Merit Scholars. It's an outstanding achievement. I'll miss the lunch for the first time, I guess, this time. And also, thanks to the AP Scholars, so many of them. Congratulations to them, to their parents, for they certainly had a part in their success. And all members of the faculty, from kindergarten teachers on up, that brought those students along to see that kind of an achievement as they finish their school years here. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I have a few things. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Janet O'Rourke and the other folks involved with the Bethel Park Comprehensive Plan, which will be on the November agenda and a copy of that is online. A lot of time and effort went into producing this document and your efforts are very much appreciated, so thank you for that. Secondly, I'd like to thank the PTO, PTA. I enjoy listening to their report that they give at the end of the month meeting, because that makes everyone aware of all the time and effort that's put into all the many things that they do to help our students, so thank you to all parties involved with that one. Next, I would like to thank Officer Modrak and Officer Z. I heard Officer Z speak in a lot of detail at the PTO, PTA council meeting about the ALIS program and as we've all said, it is scary, but it's necessary and it's, I'm glad to see that we're moving in that direction. Next, I'd like to thank the Bethel Park Soccer Association, those donations are very much appreciated. And Cliff Morton, be a buddy, not a bully. Who could be a better person but to lead that with Cliff Morton? What, what a good man. And then, as far as the students who are here this evening, I'm sorry that they're gone, but hopefully, they'll, they'll hear these comments. What impressed me most about them this evening was the way that they approached us, the way that they sat politely and listened and were so courteous in the audience and that's very much appreciated. They were professional, they were courteous, they were mindful of all that has to go on here. And I just want to reiterate something that's very important to me, in that everyone is entitled to their own opinion, but not their own facts. And whether you sit behind the table or you sit in front of the table, we all need to be cognizant of the fact that we represent this community twenty-four seven. And we need to think- And we need to think about that, I think, a little more when some of the things are, statements are made as if that's the end-all and not all the information is accurate. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza.
It's really difficult to sit at the opposite end of the table. But I'm not requesting to go first next time. That's not what my comments are about this time. I'd like to make a couple of comments and I'm going to try not to echo everyone's comments because I think they're all been well-stated and well-needed to be said. I think there's a lot of good things that have happened and are happening. Regarding the approval of the curriculum this evening, I think that I would like to see that information a lot further, or a lot sooner in the process.
Amen.
As part of the, when I was on the Citizens Curriculum Committee and I ran the Citizens Curriculum Committee, we had the opportunity to review and know before we've already gone down the road and buy books and buy materials, you know, I probably would have voted no if I thought that we had the opportunity to actually get rid of what we've already purchased. It's a difficult thing to do at this point. It's money that is difficult to not throw away. I would really like to see that happen. I read so many of those in my past and I know other people sitting here have also done that. And it's an important, important thing. And the other comment I'd like to make regards Common Core. Common Core is not a school district law or mandate. This is coming down from the state and the Department of Education. I have no control over that, but what I would like to maintain is local control of our school district and our curriculum. I can do that as best as I can under the conditions and the things that I've been given to deal with. I cannot change state law. I will work my best within state law to keep it here and keep it for Bethel Park.
Thank you. Mr. Means.
Yeah, I think we could have gone home after Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Rule spoke, but...
Sorry.
No, it was good. I would like to talk for a second about transparency. Last week, a couple of people came up to us and they talked about the agenda and Mrs. Potocar raised the issue. She said, "There's not enough information on this agenda for us to ask questions." And we realized at that point there was a problem and we are trying to address that. It is the intent of the board to be transparent and yet, we have to also respect, certain things have to be kept in the back room. And I know my first year on the board, I've only been on for not quite two years, but I was almost afraid to say anything because I wasn't assured what I could say and what I couldn't say. So be assured, we are working on it. I think the information in the agenda is going to improve. Along with the transparency is the issue of the Fact Finders. I realize a bunch of people are upset that the information in the Fact Finder Report isn't available and I can understand that, but the law pretty much indicates that the Fact Finder's Report is part of the negotiation process, so it will never be made available unless it's turned on and then it's published. And I can understand people's frustration with it. But the contract will come out and the contract will have the information, the final result in it and everybody can look at it. And as was said before, I think some people are going to be happy, they're going to say, "Oh, you know, we made some progress here." And some people are going to say they should have given the teachers more and some people are going to say they're paying them too much. But we arrived at a conclusion, at an end, that is acceptable to everybody. And I think what's really important on this contract, more than anything else, is that it's going to maintain the financial viability of our programs for the next few years. And I think we're going to be able to keep things going and maintain what we have going. And that may sound like we should be able to do that anyhow, but you have to understand that the amount of money that we get in is limited by Act One and the pie is only so big. And if we give more of the pie to one area that we're responsible for, it has to come out of another section of the pie. We have several contracts around here. We have maintenance we have to do, we have upkeep of buildings, we have supplies we have to buy, all sorts of things like that. So the school board is in this balancing act, trying to balance everything and make it all come out well. And you can't throw everything all to one side because it takes away from someplace else. So I think there's going to be people who say, "Okay, you know, the contract's okay." And there's people that are going to be unhappy for one reason or another. But I think the important thing is we have something that's going to keep us afloat and keep our programs viable for the next few years.
I think to further explain about the Fact Finder's Report, at least the way I understand it, when one party or the other turns down, the Fact Finder's Report does not accept it, then the PLRB publishes it. That gives our residents and staff a time to see what was turned down and you have a period of time to comment to the board, and I assume the Federation would have a period of time to comment to their leadership to say, "We would like you to accept this." Because again, you can during that 10-day period choose to accept. The other side of it is if both sides agree to accept the Fact Finder's Report, it is part of negotiations. Well, you wouldn't have been privy, because we do our negotiations not in the media, if you will, not out there. You wouldn't have been privy to the negotiations anyway, so to say you wouldn't actually get a copy of the Fact Finder's Report, but you will see a final contract. The final contract will contain the language of the Fact Finder's Report if it has been agreed to by both parties. So that is my interpretation of kind of how that process and why that process is that legal process that it is and why it is how it is. With regard to our curriculum, and I have sat on the Citizens Curriculum Committee, but I have to say as a board member, I rely on our committee work. That's the work of our teachers and our staff who do the research for me on all of these textbooks and who write the actual curriculum that I am approving as a board member. So I do have to say that many times I do rely on those folks who are more knowledgeable than I am about certain areas of the curriculum that I then choose to vote to approve. I concur with what Mrs. Rule learned about at PSBA, I guess, in that as a speech pathologist, I believe communication is the key and absolutely, both written and oral communication. And I believe teamwork is the other key. And in that vein, I want to thank these folks up here for their dedication to serving more than two meetings per month and all of the teamwork it takes to run this school district with a great administration team and a great faculty team, great parents who send us ultimately our number-one treasure, those great students that we have here in the Bethel Park School District. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.